All right, we'll call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance, folks. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're gonna get better at that, you guys.
The mute button helps.
Yeah, good point.
Before we move to item number three, which is meeting protocol, I would ask that an entertain a motion to add an item 6A, which would be to consider an emergency ordinance related to civil penalties for failure to abide by the governor's COVID-19 safety order.
So moved.
So moved by Chad, seconded by Jim. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Or let's do officially thumbs up, I guess. Do that, that would be good. So moving on to the meeting protocol. Chip is gonna do an attendance to see who's online with us. I would encourage folks, if you're not speaking, to mute your button. It seems like that seems to clarify some of the discussions. So with that, Chip, I'll turn it over to you.
Right, thank you. Well, we've got all seven council members. I think I see Tessa and Evan Hill there. Heather Garso. Marty's here, Chief Taylor, Dom and myself. There's a person who is logged in just as the name of Leonard. Do you want to introduce yourself? One more chance, Leonard, you want to unmute yourself?
Are you, do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, we don't have a camera that works, but it's Leonard's parent.
Hi.
Very little TV on, so this is the best show in town.
Welcome.
I might add for the older members that Tessie Bushy would have loved these times.
Leonard, if this is the best show in town, you are bored.
No, you're, I totally disagree with you. There's not much on TV.
No, that's true. Leonard, thank you for joining us.
Yeah, so I don't expect to add anything. I just, my wife is the one sitting next to me. She, she really likes this, so.
And Chip, you have another phone number. I'm not sure if you know who that is.
I don't know who that is. The person with the number 528-9987. Is it possible you can introduce yourself? Let me unmute them.
Mute me.
Oh, there we go.
Who's that again?
It's Michelle from the Messenger.
Hi, Michelle.
Hello.
Hi, Michelle, thanks for joining us.
Sure, my pleasure.
Chip, do you have anything else you want to add in terms of protocol?
No, I think things are going well. We got three co-hosts on, so if one of us drops out, the meeting should be able to continue on without any problems, so I think we're good to go.
Thank you. Thank everyone for joining us. We appreciate this. We're gonna move on to item number four, which is public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anyone who would like to make any comments? Hearing none, we will move on to item number five, which was the liquor control board. So I would entertain a motion to recess out of, out of the meeting and go to the liquor control board. Motion by Chad, seconded by Jim. All those in favor, say aye.
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 So we will now move to liquor control. We have Curry with us. Curry, do you want to share what's on the agenda for liquor control? That'd be great.
Of course, a brief one tonight. We have one new application and one renewal, and I'll just say that on the agenda, I did make an error. It's not a first class, it is a second class renewal for As the Crow Flies. And we also have a first, third, and outside consumption permit for the new establishment, The Drake. And I believe Tessa and Evan Hill are online for that, so I invited them to join us to see if council had any questions for them.
I would say normally, we would reprimand you for that mistake, but because of the COVID situation, we're gonna look, look by it.
Thank you, Tim, I appreciate it.
I want to thank Evan and Tessa for being with us. Council, do you have any questions? Why don't we start with that one, and then we'll see if anyone has any comments on the As the Crow Flies.
Marty, have you taken a look at the, the area where there's gonna be alcohol served outside to see if that is not gonna interfere with a normal pedestrian traffic?
I haven't, I haven't seen their application, but if they allow 48 inches in between the tables in the storefront, we should be good.
Easy. No problem.
I don't recall, I don't recall the former establishment having something outside. I wonder why, I just can't, I'm trying to envision it now, but I just don't recall them. So you're planning on serving alcohol outside?
Um, I, yes, if, if we're allowed the permit, I believe Shannon was in the process of, of getting her, she had a liquor license. They weren't really pushing that program. I don't know if she had applied for outside consumption.
There were tables, though.
Yeah.
There were tables out on the sidewalk, two of them.
Yeah, they had them right in front of the storefront, I think. Not in the brick course, but in the, right in front of the store.
Yeah.
I was gonna share that as well. I do remember two tables.
When I had the bakery in that location, I had Cosmic Bakery there for six years.
Oh, wow!
Yeah, we had tables out there seasonally, and it always seemed to work.
Cool.
Evan and Tessa, can you share with the council a quick vision as to what you, what your vision for that business will be?
Uh, yes. We are gonna have a small farm-to-table bar and kitchen. We have occupancy for 25 people. We expect a very busy takeout for lunch for all the folks that work downtown, and then more of a sit-down situation for dinner.
When, when that's possible, we'll certainly start with only takeout.
Yeah.
And then a full bar. We do expect to have a full bar, and also a really exciting mocktail menu.
And I'd like to point out that we, we, our hours during the week will be, the kitchen will be open till nine, and then on the weekends, the kitchen will be open until 10:00. And the bar will probably close an hour after the kitchen closes. Obviously, we'll offer food, a smaller menu, because there has to be food offered while there's alcohol service. But this is not gonna be a late-night establishment.
Family-friendly.
Kingman Street has all the exciting action. We're gonna be a little quieter than that.
And you're looking at Monday through Saturday?
Tues, we'll be closed on Sunday and Monday to start, so five, five service days a week, Tuesday through Saturday.
Okay. Council, does anyone have any other questions for Tessa and Evan? Let me, let me say to the two of you, thank you for your interest in starting a business in St. Albans. We look forward to having you on the main street, and obviously, don't hesitate to reach out to any of us to assist any way we can.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
We, we are incredibly excited. This has been 25 years in the making for me. We moved to town less than three years ago, and this is just gonna be a great fit when the dust settles and we resume our normal lives.
Great. Thank you again. Does anyone have any questions of Curry regarding As the Crow Flies? Curry, you're looking for a motion to approve both?
Yep.
Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Drake. We'll start with the Drake. I'll make a motion to approve the liquor license, the outside consumption permit. And, and I'm not worried about hours, and I don't think we should be, but just the, the liquor license alone and the outside consumption for the Drake.
Is that Mike? That was you?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or actually thumbs up, if you would. Thank you.
Motion to approve the Crow's Fly applicant submitted.
Second.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Jim to approve the As the Crow Flies second-class license. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And thumbs up, if you will, wherever your thumb is. Thank you. Now we will move, so that motion passes as well. We will move to minutes approval from the March 9th meeting of the Liquor Control Board.
Motion to approve minutes, March 9, Liquor Control.
Motion, motion by Tim, seconded by Jim. Any corrections, additions? Hearing none. All those in favor of the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Thumbs up. Thank you. Motion passes. So we will reconvene the select, or excuse me, the council meeting in number six. So we'll do the emergency management report with Chief Taylor. Chief, do you want to join us?
Sure. I think you probably know that we're at 84 positive tests in Franklin County, or at least we were today when I saw the last COVID-19 update. We're doing fairly well. One of the dilemmas is we're dealing with lots, I would dare say many complaints about people who are not being compliant with the governor's order. And that is mostly evolved around businesses being open that weren't determined or weren't deemed essential. And those are being handled appropriately through the Attorney General's Office. And we have the social distancing issue, and I know you're familiar with that, Mr. Mayor, because of some recent correspondence. Ironically, both of those correspondences were from attorneys at law. The problem really has been up until now, a real desire on the part of the governor for this to be an educational process and he's seeking voluntary compliance, which I support completely. And I would tell you that generally speaking, you know, all the law-abiding citizens, when you tell them they really need to separate a little, or you talk to them about the governor's order, comply with it almost immediately, but we have some, shall we call them frequent flyers, who are not so inclined. And they're quick to tell the cops what they can do with their executive order. So what has happened is the Attorney General's Office has started having a weekly conference call with law enforcement. And during last week, last Thursday's conference call, there was some conversation about what we do, the police, with these complaints, because these people who call and make these complaints are not satisfied to hear that there's nothing we can do, or there's nothing that we're doing. There was widespread support and agreement that if we were going to do anything, that we should all do the same thing. And the same thing seems to be that for communities to adopt an emergency ordinance that would allow them to ticket people who intentionally, after being educated and, and asked to voluntarily comply, to provide a tool in the toolbox, if you will, to the police, so that when the defiant individual says, "I'm just gonna do this, I don't care," or whatever words he chooses to use, or she chooses to use, there's some recourse. And in fact, the Attorney General's Office arranged to have the ordinance that Burlington had adopted or created under, with their guidance, by the way. And, and that's been shared with all of law enforcement, and I forwarded that to the city manager, and I guess at this point, Dom, maybe you could speak a little bit about that ordinance?
So we're, that sort of goes to the 6A on the agenda, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I get ahead of you? I didn't mean to do that.
No, I'm just, just to clarify, so people know.
Right. So that, so that's really kind of the big thing that's going on right now with emergency management is trying to get those who won't comply to comply. Anyways, I didn't mean to get out of order, I apologize.
But just to clarify, when you remind them of the governor's order, they, they respond politely?
Seldom politely, sir. Generally, they, they make some sort of lewd gesture and suggest that they have our governor's directive in their hand.
So Dom, do you want to, we'll move to 6A, which is to confirm the ordinance.
So Gary, you mean it's not a thumbs up like we're doing in our meeting today?
Well, in some cases, it involves fingers, sir.
So the ordinance flows from the directives and guidance from the AG's office and takes, I believe it's the same penalties as Burlington had in place, and structures it a little bit more within the style of our ordinances. It's intended to be an emergency ordinance that will automatically expire within 30 days unless it's extended by the council. Under the charter, we can do this with, with one meeting and put it in play.
And these are violations that are just the social distancing, not businesses, right?
Well, sir, it actually applies to anybody who intentionally chooses to ignore the governor's directives, the executive order.
You're right, but the, I understand that, but the examples that you gave are not businesses doing that to you, right? They're, they're social distancing disobedience, okay. I just couldn't imagine any business doing that, but yeah.
Believe it or not, we do have a couple of businesses that are involved in something like that. They're in the town, not in the city, and the Attorney General's Office is in fact involved in the educational side of that for them. And there's been some issues regarding houses of worship, holding parking lot services in the cars. And the Attorney General, again, is dealing with that. He just felt like maybe the social distancing was the thing that was the most appropriate for the police to deal with.
But if they're in their, if they're in their car, you're maintaining social distance, or no?
Well, again, I would choose not to get involved. The Attorney General has actually come up with an opinion about, you know, the occupants of the vehicle have to remain in the vehicle, and they have to be from the same household. And the vehicles can't be closer than six feet. So there is some guidelines. There are two churches that insisted on continuing. One was in Bennington, one was in Williston. And they did so this past weekend, under the guidance of the Attorney General.
Dom, do you have any, go ahead.
I guess, well, I guess, Tim, it took me a long time to say that, I guess, but I, really, it is. What we're talking about doing is maybe issuing a ticket to people who refuse to park, to separate by six feet.
And, and that's what I was gonna add. Your, the, the preference is to educate, give them a chance before you jump right into issuing.
Yeah, we don't, we really don't want to be jackbooted thugs, if you will. That's not really what we perceive our role to be. At the same time, there has to be some mechanism for us to be able to, to get some compliance. And I would also suggest to you that we're probably not, I would suspect there won't be any fines collected. The likelihood is probably not great, but I can't ask police officers to go out and do this and be embarrassed and ridiculed and mocked with no ability to back it up.
Understandable. Any other questions for Chief? So you have, you should have all received the COVID emergency regulation as of today. So looking for a motion to consider an emergency ordinance related to civil penalties for failure to abide by the governor's COVID-19 safety order.
So moved.
Motion by Chad.
Thank you.
Seconded by Kate. Any other comments, questions for Chief? Hearing none. All those in favor to approving the emergency ordinance, give a thumbs up.
Aye.
And an aye, yeah. So we go, anyone opposed? I think, I think in that case, you give a thumbs down.
Or your finger.
Or what Chief is, is used to on that. So the motion passes unanimously, and Chief, thank you for your time on that. We will then move on to item number seven, which I believe would be Chip joining us regarding a public hearing for a child care grant application to VCDP.
Yes, thank you, Tim, and we're joined by Heather Garso, who owns the Almond Blossom Schoolhouse, which, which owns the Childcare Center at 233, 235 Lake Street.
Welcome, Heather.
We've, we've already been through this before. We currently have a planning grant with VCDP to plan for the, the renovations and other materials associated with putting together the package for the renovations and expansion at the site. We did a hearing with the city council in September to prepare for an implementation grant with VCDP, but the program waved us off back then, saying they'd rather, we were farther along with the planning grant before we applied. Now we're at that stage. We do need to do the hearing over again. But instead of signing a new resolution in this day and age of remote meetings, we just suggest that if the city council still approves of the reservation, resolution, that you just pass a motion to reaffirm the resolution from September. You know, I guess we'll let Heather explain more about what's planned at the Childcare Center.
Hey, I know that we've, a lot of you have heard this before, but we are, I'm in the old building that the Holy Angels nuns used to live in. We have a 30-child childcare center here now. We do a lot of specialized care, which means that we have a lot of children from DCF. A lot of families within walking distance of the, the center. The grant is mainly to purchase the building and then to be able to expand into the upstairs, which would make it a 60-kids center. Pretty much doubling the size of all of the age groups. I'm sure that you guys are familiar and watch the news. Let's Go Kids is very active in letting everybody know that there's a huge need for childcare in the area. There's a lot of studies that support that right here in Franklin County definitely needs the more childcare. I think that one of the main things that I have found in the two years that I've been operating here, again, is that a lot of the families walk here, and a lot of the families around here that are walking here don't have a vehicle. So it's kind of a need specifically in this area, in the downtown district, that people can get back to work and be able to utilize childcare so that they can, you know, better their lives, I guess. We offer the food program, and we're in the process of getting Act 166, which are both two things that are benefits to families. In the two years that we've been open, we have, I don't know if you're familiar with the Stars package, or how the rating system, but we are a four-star center, which for our first time putting in an application, it was kind of difficult to come by to get four out of the five stars on your first try. So we're doing the best so we can.
Heather, does the church still own the building?
It is still in the possession of the trust, and we are renting from them. Our lease actually runs out in June. So it's pretty important that we get in on this grant application for the, the April application.
And in this day and age with the, with the essential workers, how many, how many children of essential workers do you have now?
So we, we actually ended up taking in a ton of school-aged children when they were displaced when the schools closed. So we are at full, the new full capacity with the new state guidelines of 22 children attending. And that's because they've redone the group size, group sizes. Obviously, we can only have 10 in a group, including the teacher. So we're at our max here.
Good. Does anyone have any questions of Heather?
Tim, I would just add for the record that the grant request is for $500,000, and that's the maximum request.
Okay. And that's for the, would that be for the June board meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions of Chip or Heather, anyone on the council, or the public? Hearing none. So all you're looking for is a reconfirmation of the resolution, right, Chip? Not the, not the application itself?
Yeah, the, the resolution authorizes us to apply. I think just a motion reaffirming your signed resolution from, let me see when it was from, it's sometime in September.
September 9th, I believe we signed it.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Looking for a motion to that effect from the council?
I move to reaffirm the council resolution for the childcare application that we signed on September 9, 2019.
Thank you, James. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chad. Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, say aye and give a thumbs up.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you, Heather. Thank you, Chip. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks for joining us. We'll move on to item number nine, which is Congress and Maine update and action item. We're gonna consider a resolution to authorize the transfer of Unit 4 to 10 Maiden Lane LLC. And authorize LLC borrowing and authorize recording of VHCP, V H C B Housing Subsidy Covenant on Congress. A lot going on there. Dom, you wanna give an overview of that?
Sure. Council's been briefed on it, but just for the public. This does a couple of things. It, the city is a member of the LLC that is developing the workforce housing building, which is the last of the units in the Congress and Maine project known as Unit 4. So we're authorizing the borrowing because we're a member of the LLC, but our liability is limited to our investment. So we're authorizing the borrowing because we're a member of the LLC, but our liability is limited to our investment. We also, as the owner of the, of Unit Four, need to authorize the transfer, that's the first part of the motion. And finally, it records a covenant on twelve Congress, which is a perpetual rent restriction on the, the housing units on the upper floors in twelve Congress, it's the same, covenant that's on the restricted units within the workforce housing unit that Grant Butterfield is developing on the other side of the lot, and it restricts the rents to between eighty and a hundred and twenty percent of median household income within the, Burlington metropolitan statistical area. So it'll be another mouthful, but I think that's it in a nutshell.
Any questions for Dom? Hearing none from the council, any from the general public? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve a resolution to authorize the transfer of Unit Four to Ten Maiden Lane LLC. Motion by Mike, seconded by Jim, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye with a thumbs up.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none, hearing none, the resolution will pass, thank you. Now we're gonna move on to, recording of the housing subsidy covenant on twelve Congress.
Actually, Tim, I think that flows with the same motion.
Oh, it's all one?
All one resolution.
Okay. Okay. So nothing to add to that, Dom, motion passes, we're good?
We're good, I think we're on to number ten.
Okay. Back to number ten, we'll bring Tessa and Evan back on, so we're gonna, we received an application for a facade grant for the Drake, located at, what's the address on that, Mike?
Thirty South Main.
Thirty South Main, thank you, I was just testing, if he remembered.
And Mike's already forgotten.
Just couldn't get to the mute button fast enough.
Marty, have you been involved in that discussion? Gonna unmute her. What's that?
I have not been involved in this.
So the application came in, with the, and we, in your packet, you saw a visual of the sign, so the facade grant is for, to split the cost of a sign for the Drake. As we have discussed in the past, the signage can make a huge difference moving forward for a new business, and we wanna play a role in that, so, we would pay, Chip, can you refresh our memory as to the amount?
Yep, they got a quote for $3,846 for the carved wooden sign, it's a nice looking sign. There's also, I believe, a $95 installation. So fifty-fifty would be around $1,970, give or take, depending on, you know, the plus or minus on final installation.
Okay. Any questions for Tessa or Evan? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve the facade grant for the amount that Chip has shared.
Same thing.
Aye.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Kate, is that correct, at work?
Sure.
All right, any other questions? Hearing none, thumbs up, or a yea for the approval?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, any opposition, hearing none, motion passes. Tessa and Evan, thanks for joining us, that's been approved, so, feel free to move ahead with the new sign, and once again, thanks for doing business in St. Albans, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much, thanks to all of you for joining on this online and, and helping us out, we, can't thank you enough, we're, we're so looking forward to it.
We look.
I hope this madness gets over soon so we can come and join you at the restaurant.
Yeah.
We do too.
Before you guys jump off, I just wanted to say that when, when Brian and I opened the bakery, it was, you know, two thousand eight, it was basically like the week that Lehman Brothers collapsed, and, you know, it didn't take us too long to turn the corner and, and be profitable in, in there, and you guys are gonna be selling booze, so, you should be in better shape than we were with bagels.
Amazing, thank you, Mike.
We're, we're looking at all the ways we can adapt for the community and make it work.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks, Scott, thank you, everyone.
You're welcome. We're gonna move on to item number eleven, that's where we'll bring Marty in to talk about the approval of the 2020 paving list, Marty?
So I believe everybody got a copy of the proposal in their packet, uh, just for the general public, we're looking at doing, Upper Gilman from Maine to Lincoln, Lincoln Avenue from Fairfield to Congress, North Elm from Lake to Lower Newton, Russell Street, Brainerd Street from Main Street to Congress, which would include Prospect, Lower Wellin finishing that section from South Elm to Russ, or, to Russell, Stevens Avenue, and a section of Pearl from North Elm West to just beyond Cedar Street. We would also, depending on where the price comes in, with the oil being so low right now, we're hearing that the price is gonna be somewhere around probably low seventies, seventy-one, seventy-two a ton. I think last year, we were paying in the low eighties, so hopefully, we can do a little more, if we're able to do more, we would probably add Sunset Terrace to that list, that hasn't been hit in over fifteen years. It's in rough shape, and we would also include Rouge Drive, with an agreement with Jim Hungerford, where we would supply the material, and he would supply the manpower and equipment to pave it. The only street we would need to coal plane would, there's a couple, Russell and Ben Brainerd, because of the curbs, so we would save some money there as well, the streets that don't have curbs, we wouldn't need to coal plane. And the only street that we would have to hold off on waiting for the sidewalk curb project would be Brainerd. No other street would be impacted as a result of that, so depending on the schedule, their schedule with, everything that's going on right now, we typically pave in August, late, mid to late August, so we would try to hit that same schedule. We've got one contractor coming up Thursday to do a measurement, and waiting to hear from two other contractors as to when they can come up to do measurements.
I'd just like to add, for the benefit of Leonard Parent and his wife, it pays dividends to join the select, or the council meeting, on the new paving you're gonna get.
That, that and the fact that he hit a pothole on North Elm this year, too.
I don't know if that works, I've been on for twelve years, and this is the first time Brainerd Street's come up or anything.
Oh, I gotta be honest with you, Tim, the others said no to Brainerd, but I said, no way, I'm putting it on.
Marty, I got a, I got a question about the corner of Lower Wellin and Gaia Circle, Edmonds, Edward Street, that little corner right there, there's kind of a sinkhole, is this gonna get fixed at that time, or is it gonna be fixed before?
We will try to fix it.
Okay, thanks.
That way, when they pay, they would just pay the apron up to Edward.
And I had a question about the corner of Cedar and Pearl.
I was gonna ask that as well, Marie.
Yeah, it's, do you feel that repeating that will solve that issue that Mrs. Longtree was having with that area, did anybody go and look at that?
That hasn't been paved and once it starts to break away, uh, it just continues in the transit and we've also had four water leaks on that section in the last year and a half.
Yes.
Every time we dig it up too, it compounds the issue. So.
Right.
Yeah. For rebuilding the base and everything in there, this will certainly, uh, improve for the next several years.
So you're breaking up Marty. So do you think you would get to that this year?
Yes.
Okay.
And, and I had one other question about Murray Drive because I had, it did have a resident there that was, uh, concerned about, um, I think it was the sidewalk issue there. There's no sidewalks. And so I know we said that that would be, and the paving of that would be with the LOT funds. So we looking at next year probably for that?
That isn't for paving this year. Um, but we are, I believe, doing the sidewalk on Murray Drive this year. So we aren't going to do the curb because the curb is in pretty good shape. There's still about five or six inch reveal. Uh, but we are definitely doing the, the sidewalk and then we would probably put on the next couple of years.
So, so you're, you're talking, you were kind of breaking up a little, but you're talking this year then?
For the, the, this year wouldn't be a sidewalk. We wouldn't pave it this year. We would wait and pave it either next year or the year after.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Marty.
Marty, is that, is that the sidewalk that's like 18 inches wide or is that on Gaia Circle?
No, that's the sidewalk that's asphalt about 18 inches wide. Uh, at the very end of it, it has two manholes that are sticking up about four inches out of the ground that are sidewalk plow hits every year.
So what, what street is that?
Poorly designed sidewalk.
What street is that?
Murray, Murray Drive.
So that's the one you're, you would look at in the future?
Yes.
Yeah. Are there any other questions for Marty?
Marty, you're not purposely messing with your internet connection. So we'll give you a raise for a better router.
No, this is my laptop from work. So it is what it is.
Any other questions for Marty?
Get you off my phone next time.
Mar, I just wanted to ask Marty about Stevens. Um, is, is that going to pave all of Stevens? I'm just noticing that's a
Yeah.
small dollar amount.
Yeah.
Great. That's in really good shape. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so we need a vote on that list, paving list for 2020. Hearing no other comments, I'd entertain a motion to approve the paving list.
So moved.
Motion by Chad. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Marie. Any other comments? Hearing none, thumbs up for yay. And, and thumbs down for any nays. Seeing none, we will, uh, approve the paving list as presented by Marty. Thank you, Marty.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to 12 mayor's report. We have some nominations. Um, two for, uh, design advisory board, both renewals. Uh, you both, I think everyone has seen that in an email from Chip. Um, at this time, we'd like to, um, entertain a motion unless there's opposition, but I think we're in agreement that we would, um, approve the reappointments for the individuals that were in your packet. Um.
Were we going to do that for, were we going to do that for one year? Is that, is that, I know we, there was an email that was, uh, I think gone around between me, you and Chip, uh, I, I, and maybe, and maybe Dominic, but we were going to do those for a year and then after the, or Chad, we were going to do those for a year, subject to reappointment, um, a year from now. Or are we, are we just taking those on full tonight?
Chip, your thoughts?
Um, you know, it's, 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 it's ultimately up to the council. They are, um, they are existing, uh, members now. Typically we do three-year terms. I think, uh, if I, if I understood correctly, the, the reason to appoint for only one year was to allow to, um, find a way to do the, uh, the interview either remotely or in person back when things are back to normal. Is that, is that why you suggested it, Tim?
Yeah, it, 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 it was, but I was rethinking that and I don't have a problem, uh, reappointing them for the full three-year term. I, I just threw that out because I thought other members had a problem with us. I, I, cause Tim was saying that the protocol was for us to have the interview and I just made that suggestion, uh, in lieu of not having the interview. So we didn't have to bring him in during this time, but I would have no opposition to just reappointing them for, uh, the, the regular terms.
So just to refresh people's, so we're not, so I was on the same page. We had two people renewals for the design advisory board, and then we had two new applicants for the downtown board. The two new applicants, um, we haven't had a chance to meet with. My suggestion was if, if we've already have two people on the design advisory board, we just renew them for a period of time, whether it's a year or three years, makes no difference to me, but at least we, we've had those, you know, they've been approved once. Uh, we can just move forward with those and then have a quick discussion about how we want to handle the two downtown, uh, recommendations from the downtown board. So if people are on board with that, I'd entertain a motion to renew the two individuals for the, um, for the downtown advisory board.
You mean the design advisory board?
Excuse me, design advisory board. Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Chad, seconded by Tim. Any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye with a thumbs up.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, uh, we will appoint, uh, Chip, the two names are, share that with me.
Stefan Poston and Evan Champagne.
Yes, thank you. So we will reappoint those to the, uh, design advisory board. Now quickly, uh, we, we were looking to do interviews before this, but schedules did not allow. I guess I'm looking for, do people want to try to pull that together before our next meeting? Um, let me just.
I'll make a motion to appoint those for a one-year terms, subject to, um, a, a meeting with, uh, the mayor and the, the selected council. I think it's one or two of us and then, uh, we can approve them after the one year for a, an additional term or a continuance of their normal terms. Is that too much?
It's being recorded. So we've got the motion.
All right. So, uh, so what I'm saying is let's, let's get them on for a year and, uh, subject to either our, our reappointment for the remaining term after a year or anything that we decide after the time comes when we, when we have the interview. And I'll be one of the interviews, since I'm making the motion, Tim, I'll be one of the interview, we, interviewers with you, um, in case we have a problem with it. But let's get them on for a year.
So we have a motion. We have it by Tim, seconded by Jim. Um, any other questions or comments? Hearing none. All those in favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposition, thumbs down, hearing none. Um, so we will, uh, appoint to the downtown board, Jeremy Reed and Keith Longmore, is it?
Yep.
So, um, so Tim and I, uh, is there another council person that'd like to join us in those interviews? And then we will, um, set up a time, but as Tim stated, uh, we will move forward in appointing them to the downtown board for one year. Keep in mind our interview with those individuals will be, uh, conference call, obviously.
Yeah, I, I can help out.
Yeah. Or this summer or at, at, at another time before the year ends. Doesn't have to be right away.
We can meet at the Drake.
Good.
Okay. So, uh, Chip, it'll be, um, moving forward, Tim Hawkins and Mike McCarthy sitting down with those applicants at some point.
Very good.
Moving on to council reports, we'll go around the table, see if anyone has, uh, information you'd like to share. Um. Well, we, uh, Tim, we didn't hear from you last meeting, um, due to your stay in Florida, but did you want to, do you have anything?
Oh, I, I, I was actually here. I was the one on the line. I, I was actually here when that last meeting.
Oh, you were here?
Yeah, I was here. Uh, but I do have a couple of things. One is, um, uh, I had mentioned it earlier. Uh, Dominic, can you just, uh, tell us, uh, I, I took my third call on Saturday regarding, uh, whether or not, uh, the city was going to lose any of the current funding that we have in place, uh, for any of the projects that we have going on and whether the taxpayer was going to end up bearing the burden of any of that.
No, that's a fair question. Sure. That's a fair question. Um, um, I think it's highly unlikely. We haven't seen any, um, indications of efforts to throttle back on previous commitments. You know, I wouldn't say, uh, never, but, um, um, that's, most of those are all money in hand, uh, too far down the road for, uh, reprioritizing, uh, at this point.
Okay. Uh, my second question is, um, uh, what are, Chip, maybe the Chip, uh, Chip, is green up day out now? Cause I'm, now I'm back, I'm not in Florida this year, uh, so I'm here. Um, and, uh, green up day seems like one of those functions where someone could be, uh, keep their social distance from, from somebody.
I can, I can touch on that, Chip. Um, so it, it was postponed, um, to May 30th, which, um, I actually pushed back a little bit. Uh, I thought we could have gone through with it on May 2nd. Um, but the, the decision was made to move it to the 30th. How much, you know, if you look at what the impact would be with a green up day, I think May 30th, it's going to be pretty minimal for most parts, but, um, I know Ennisburg is doing a green up day this Saturday in some areas. Um, it's just that gray area. Do you want to go against what the governor has proposed and try to keep it or you just wait until May 30th? So currently it is, uh, the recommendation to move it to May 30th.
Okay. Um, Marty, uh, I've noticed, and I'm sure a bunch of us have noticed, a new, uh, sign up at the, uh, St. Albans Shopping Center, uh, saying, uh, Indian and Nepal food?
Yes.
And, and, and so, uh, is that, uh, uh, is, what's going on with that? Is that like a new takeout or is that?
It's going to be a new restaurant up there. I think they are waiting to do reservations, renovations on it and can't do any renovations as a result of the stay-at-home water.
Okay. And in keeping with, uh, the conversation on the St. Albans Shopping Center, I've noticed a number of the bollards are down. Um, and, uh, I actually, um, uh, there's one that might be, uh, near, nearer the pedestrian walkway. Uh, and I think those are from when there was parking at the Planet Fitness and cars parking too close. I'm wondering if the, um, uh, the, the, uh, Palmero needs to reconsider, uh, the usefulness of those bollards, given the new parking setup that he has.
Were they taken down as a result of snow removal, you think? Or were they?
I, I think they were cars just parking, uh, in the, in the, in the required spots, but just getting too close and just, and just knocking them over.
I can reach out to, uh, I can send Ernie an email and just touch base with him on it.
There's a number of them right now that are down. I think there, there's probably a, a four, four to a half a dozen that are down. Uh, the other thing is, is down near the repair by Boston Taylor. Um, they, they did a good job with repair and it's, and it's holding up, uh, uh, given what we've done with the water and stuff. But right before the repair traveling northward, um, uh, it, it is a hole that, in the road that collects water and someone just thinks they're going through a puddle. And then by the time they've gone through the puddle, they found that half their tire has, is, is now inside the pavement. And I don't know.
Is that just, is that just, uh, north of the drive into the parking garage right there?
Uh.
In that northbound lane?
It's, it's, no, it's on, it's on, it's on the, it's on the southbound lane. It's on the southbound lane, uh, in the, in, in, almost right in front of, uh, Truski's, uh, building there, uh, right next to Boston Taylor, right before the repair.
Okay. All right. We'll take a look at it.
That's all, that's, uh, that's all I have.
Tim, I would, I would share, since you brought up the parking lot and the shopping center, uh, I've had a few people comment that they do like the new format. Um, it took a little while getting used to, but I think it, it has proven to be, uh, safer than what it is.
Absolutely. 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 Yep.
So.
But he might need to rethink those bollards, whether they're, whether they need to be there anymore because they're getting knocked down with, with some type of frequency now. And, and people aren't doing anything wrong. They're just parking in the spot and I think their bumper is, is just hitting them and knocking them over.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
I don't, I don't think it's vandalism.
Uh, Jim?
Thank you. Um, I think the one place in that shopping center where there should have been some stop, uh, bars that, that, that we never ever have had is right when you, when you come in, um, from, uh, going, going, going northbound, the cross between where you would go from Planet Fitness to the, to the, uh, to, to the bank and back. There's no stop area there. People could just drive right through there in, in front of any cars entering in that little slant, uh, entrance there. There should probably be something there, but there isn't. There never has been. But, um.
Oh, Jim, can I jump in on that a little bit?
Yes, go ahead.
So a lot of the stop bars have been worn away. Marty, when you had that conversation, can you just, uh, maybe ask, um, Ernie if they will be, um, refreshing those moving forward and then maybe add one for, add the one Jim's referring to?
Yeah, I can bring that to his attention. The one comment I heard from a resident was that, um, especially this winter, the stop bars didn't do a whole lot of good because they were on the pavement. People couldn't see them anyway.
Right.
And wondered if we could have them install stop signs. And I'm not sure if he would want to do that. Uh, and I explained that to this resident just because of the snow removal obstacles and stuff like that. So I can, I can bring it to his attention. He's been pretty responsive so far.
Go ahead, Jim. Sorry to interrupt.
No, it's okay. Um, no, I, I wouldn't expect winter time. I think people are more careful in winter anyway. Oh, but, um, I really have nothing much else. Just a comment, uh, Tim, on your defying the governor's orders for green up day, which you're not going to do, but you know, Gary might, uh, decide to fine you for, with, with our new fines there for defying the governor's. Just thought I'd bring it up, you know, that, uh, I said not, nothing. Thanks.
I'm glad you're paying attention. Kate, what do you have for us?
Um, I don't, I don't really have anything this meeting.
Can, can you, uh, can you share one thing for me? I think Chief Taylor talked about, uh, 81 or 87, uh, confirmed cases of COVID in Franklin County. And I, I understand if we're exceeding our HIPAA regulations, but, um, that doesn't necessarily mean 87 people are hospitalized, right? I mean, I think there's some confusion to that. Um, and that, uh, actually many of them are sent home. Uh, once again, I don't know what you can share with us, but.
Yeah, that's a good point. Um, most of the cases are in the community and not in the hospital right now. Um, you know, we have several patients who are positive or who we are waiting on test results, but the number has maintained a really manageable level for us. So we are not, we do not have enormous numbers. When you look at that, the, the cases, total cases in the county, most of those folks are at home, being cared for at home. And, um, you know, at, at the current time, we're doing pretty well up at the hospital.
And the complex has yet to be utilized, correct?
That's right.
Kate, do those numbers include what we have at the correctional facility? Cause it looks like we have half our numbers are down there.
Yeah, they do. And that was one of the reasons that, um, the numbers jumped recently was because those, the, uh, Northwest State numbers got added into the tally.
Thanks, Kate. Marie?
Um, just one comment, getting back to the, uh, shopping center parking lot. Um, yesterday I happened to go up into that parking lot and there was a truck parked right in front of Sherwin-Williams. It was parked right over the stop mark. Um, is there any way we can keep people from parking in there? I mean, I know it'd be pretty hard to have to sit there all day and monitor that, but, um, I, I think a lot of people park there and it's to the point that it was blocking my view, uh, of the crosswalk where people would, you know, would have been simple for somebody to walk out in front of there and, you know, I could have hit them. I, I go slow, so I don't, but, um, is there anything that, any suggestions that might help in a situation like that?
I, I'm just checking. I think she, I think Chief got off the call, I think. Um.
Are you saying that was in the fire lane, Marie?
Well, I'm not sure if it was the actual fire lane, but this, this truck was, was parked right up against that curbing where I don't believe there's supposed to be parking. And, um, it was, it was also blocking the view of that crosswalk that leads out of Rite Aid down to the parking lot.
Yeah, that's.
Were they unloading, uh, at Sherwin-Williams? Do you know, Marie, or?
No, I think he was just sitting there waiting for somebody to come out of the pharmacy.
It was a regular pickup truck then?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, I think, uh, just notifying dispatch, let them know and they would send an officer up to check it out and ticket them because I think that is a fire lane.
Yes, I, I believe, I believe it is. When I used to work up there, I, I know it used to be a long time ago. So.
And, and they've got no parking in the fire lane signs on every post down through there. So.
Now, do we, do we generally, I mean, I know that Chief's gone on, do we generally monitor and enforce the parking lane violation?
Yes.
I haven't seen much of it. Okay.
I know it's come up for discussion before when we initially, um, were having the discussions with Palm Loos about the new design, um, Chief was well aware of parking in the fire lane.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thanks.
That's all I have.
Okay. Mike, you have any to add?
Now that the, uh, most busted up street in Ward Four is, uh, going to get paved, uh, I, I don't think I really have anything on, I do want to say, I, I hope that you're all seeing, most people are really, uh, taking the social distancing seriously, like even when you're out walking. And I'm just, I really love the fact that people are taking care of each other. It's just great.
Are you saying your social media's been quiet or?
Oh, no, on social media it's terrible, but in the neighborhood it's great.
Hey, Mike, I think people are, I think people are avoiding you now because of social distancing. It's just, ah, it's the legislator. It's a city council member.
I think, I think this whole thing's brought a lot of people together. I know, uh, uh, yesterday while Mike up in your area, they had singing out in the street, um, and on the upper Gilman as well. And I thought that was pretty cool.
Yes, it would depend who's singing, Marie.
Well, this is true, but we didn't have any on our street. So that's probably a good thing.
That would be cruel or cruel depending.
I will say, it seems like our new sidewalks are getting plenty of use in the last couple of weeks.
No doubt about it.
Uh, and I would applaud PD too, for the efforts they did yesterday escorting the Easter Bunny around. I've heard a lot of feedback on that. So, job well done.
I had some very excited grandkids, so.
Great. Were you inside that suit there, Marty?
No, I don't think it was, I don't think it was big enough. I thought the mayor was in it, but.
Last but not least, Chad?
Oh, Chad's gone.
Chad has nothing to offer. Thanks, Chad.
Chad's off the call.
I, I'm good. I, I did call and tell Dom the one thing I had. I just do, I want to thank Dominic. I know we thank the PD and we thank Public Works Law, but it's been pretty tough, I think, at City Hall and I want to thank Dom for everything.
My pleasure.
That's it, Chad? All right. Okay. We'll move on. Uh.
Boy, that mute button comes in handy.
My problem is Chip, Chip is the one that controls it. Uh, we'll move on to item number 14, consider approval of meeting minutes, special meeting and regular meeting, nine, three, nine, 20.
Motion to approve special meeting, two, 24, 20.
Second.
All those in favor say aye, thumbs up.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion passes.
Motion to approve minutes, three, 30, 20.
Second.
Any changes or amendments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none, minutes passes.
Motion to approve regular meeting, uh, three, nine, 20.
Second.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Jim. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, minutes for three, 20, three, nine, 20 passes.
Motion to approve warrants, three, 13, 20.
Second.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Jim, approving warrants of three, 13. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none.
I'm abstaining, Tim. I'm abstaining.
Chad's abstaining. Thank you, Chad.
Motion to approve warrants, three, 31, 20.
Second.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Jim. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none. Motion passes. Uh, one thing Dom, I would ask is, do we, are we fine with getting back to the monthly schedule or is there a need to do updates every two weeks?
I've been inclined to take it as it comes. Um, plan on the monthly unless we feel like things are heating up and, um, I find things are actually slowing down more than speeding up right now. So.
I sense that myself.
So, so has everybody got my home email now and not sending it to the one that used to be at work for me or the, um, JA Pelkey at Comcast.net as opposed to Jim Doc Pelkey? Cause I'd rather have just the home email.
And you said JA Pelkey at Comcast.net?
That's correct.
No periods?
No.
Tim, I got something to add to. Tim Hawkins here. I got something to add to.
Go ahead, Tim.
So Tim, Dominic, Marty, Chip, um, is, as the, uh, uh, the governor spoke today, I had said, I, I'd mentioned, and we were just talking in, in discussion, the chatroom that, uh, some of the things that he said, it made me feel like in the next couple of weeks and the, in the, or the next week or so, uh, he was going to be doing a couple of things to, to, um, turn on the spigot, so to speak. Are, are you folks going to just do that, um, as it goes? Or are, are you guys going to be, uh, requesting that the council do anything? And if, if, should we as the council be giving you authority to do anything? How's that going to work?
I think last time we did it, you know, I think it falls into operations. There isn't a lot of policy there. Um, the, um, you know, I, we didn't have a whole lot of discretion in it, to be honest. The governor made it pretty clear.
But it's, it's, it appears to me that the way that think, that the reverse is going to be, um, uh, very limited in ways, uh, and, uh, uh, and, and certain employees, certain things. And I'm just wondering how that's going to go. Will it be just coming from, uh, Tim, from the, the administration or will it, would take any council action?
Yeah, I mean, typically it hasn't. We, we can connect with the council if you'd like, um, but.
I don't think you should have to. And, uh, yeah, okay. If you, if you do, then maybe we should do something tonight that just says you have the authority on the part of the council to go as the governor, you know, directs.
Yeah.
Uh, but we don't know what he's going to say. We don't know what's going to happen, but I don't want that to, I don't want us having to get together, have, have to hold up anything.
I don't, yeah, I, I appreciate the question. I feel like the, the charter provides the direction that we need to make those decisions. And, um, kind of like, um, when we did the furloughs, I briefed the council, let them know the direction we were headed. Probably do a similar thing, um, keep you in the loop and, um, we can get together if we need to. But, you know, probably, um, uh, I think we're going to, uh, get back in the same way we got out, uh, following similar paths and, and those that were the last to stop working might be the first to restart. Um, so.
Okay.
I'd like to add one last thing, and that is, uh, we've scheduled, um, two more blood drawings for City Hall. Um, one April 16th and I think May 13th. Uh, the blood drawings have been very well received. Uh, they've maxed out appointments. Um, um, not that they've, they've lost a few only because of the wait time, but, um, it's been very appreciative by the Red Cross and individuals, uh, that we have opened up for the blood drawing. So two more, like I said, April 16th, 10 to three, and then, uh, actually the hospital is manning or overseeing. Two more, like I said, April 16th, 10 to 3, and then actually the hospital is manning or overseeing the one on the 13th of May, so. Kudos to the staff for making those work. I think it was well needed and it really, really reflected well on the city, so. Anyone else have anything else to add?
I would just like to throw out a comment to Brian Willett and Troy Baker, those two guys have been keeping their plants running with their respective crews and doing a good job. We had a little issue up at the water plant last week, but Troy was right on it. So we're fortunate to have those guys and those crews there, taking care of the day-to-day operations.
Let's extend our thank you, Marty. All right, entertain a motion to adjourn? And we have a second and just one comment for the record, we're 27 minutes ahead of schedule, so.
And one more, Chip has fixed his background.
What's that?
Chip has also fixed his background.
Fixed his background, yeah.
Now, it's a backwards map of America due to the mirroring effect of Zoom.
You're right, yeah.
Thank you all, take care.
Thank you, stay safe, bye.